Hello, I'm Jennifer Wallowitz, the Town Administrator for Munson. Today, we're going to be reviewing the special town meeting articles that will be on October 27th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at Granite Valley School. Later on, I'll have Hope Bodwell with me. Hope is our library director. I'll have Chief Brian Harris joining me, as well as Ben Murphy, our Highway Surveyor, and Craig Jalbert, our Water and Sewer Superintendent. This year's special town meeting has 32 articles. Seven of the articles are from our Water and Sewer Department. We have six articles from the Community Preservation Committee, and we will not be highlighting all of those today, but we will touch upon one that has a connection to Chief Brian Harris. We have three zoning articles coming from the Planning Board, and I also will not highlight those today as those will be discussed on Town Meeting floor. So please take your time and listen in, and you're going to hear all about the articles that will be coming your way on Monday, October 27th. And after viewing this, please feel free to reach out to me at the Town Hall at 413-267-4101, or you can stop by and visit us to ask questions about the articles, or email at jwolowicz@munson-ma.gov. Thank you. Hi, we have Hope Bodwell with us. She's our library director. And Hope has an article on Town Meeting, and it's going to be Article 12 when you look through the warrant. And I'll just give you a little description of it. It is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the Munson Free Library. Hope is going to explain to us why she's asking for additional funds at this special town meeting, and how those funds will support the programs and services of the community at the Munson Free Library. Thanks for joining us today, Hope.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, the library is asking for an additional $30,000 to our budget. Let me explain that. The state has a municipal appropriated requirement, which the town did vote on in May, and we are very grateful for that. That dollar amount was 327,048. Our overall budget is 405,656. We have the ability to fundraise. We are a 501(c)(3), so we can fundraise and decrease that deficit. We get state aid because the town supports us. We get grants. There are different ways that we can raise money. All that said and done, it still leaves us with a deficit of over $27,000. To that end, we have cut staff hours, around $19,000 worth of staff hours. We actually closed two hours on Wednesdays, so we're only open until 5:00 instead of 7:00 PM. But if you remember, I did go before Finance Committee in April. This is not sustainable. Our overall increase with that municipal appropriated requirement was $4,424. $4,000. That's not a lot of money. I think we all understand. We all see our own bills for our homes. That basically is two months' heating bill for the library at this point. I had $2,000 heating bills last year. So hopefully, we don't get those again, but you never know. There are a lot of things that the town does not cover, and I just want to make this clear. The Library Corporation owns the building and the grounds. They take care of all that maintenance. As you know, we did the window project. That was not paid for with tax dollars. That was paid for with the library endowment. The parking lot expansion, the patio, new boilers, new carpet, that was all done through the Library Corporation. They take very good care of the building. The town supports the library. They pay for anything that makes us a public library. So all the heating, the lights, all the acquisitions, not just books anymore, but the acquisitions. And the state does require that we spend 19% of our operating budget on acquisitions. That's about $62,000. So there is a lot that needs to be paid for. Once you take our MAR, our appropriated requirement, and take out salaries, take out acquisitions, it doesn't leave us with much money to actually pay the electric bill. So we are asking for $30,000 in addition to our budget. If you go on the state site to the DLS, Department of Local Services, you will see a pie chart there. Look at Munson. We are 1.13% of the overall town budget. So I am asking you to please vote for the $30,000 so we can maintain the services that you have come to rely on and that you love. And right before I came here, we just had someone come in. Can you please help me? My printer's broken. We want to continue to help you. So please vote for a $30,000 increase to our budget.
Thank you so much, Hope. And as Hope said, you'll have the opportunity to hear more about her article on Special Town Meeting night, October 27th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Hope. Have a great day.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben Murphy, Highway Surveyor, for joining me today in our preview of the Special Town Meeting warrant articles.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. The first one that we're going to talk about that falls under the Highway Department is going to be Article Number Four. And I'll do a brief review of the description. It's to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer and appropriate from available funds the sum of $10,000 to pay for an outside vendor to provide cemetery maintenance. Can you give us a little understanding about what that means to transfer the monies and where they're coming from, and what the monies will support for the cemetery department?
Yes. So what this is, is money that is existing there, but it's what is under, right now, is under a salary part of the cemetery department, which would be for a part-time help. What we did this past year is that since we were down one individual at the cemetery department is we took a portion of that, and we put it into Hillside Cemetery for the lawn care of it, where our one full-time employee would not have time, because it's our biggest cemetery, to keep up with. So we hired that out. What we did was, we had the $10,000. So far between from July to September, we have spent $4,075. And from April to June, it was $5,000. So we're at the $9,050 threshold for the whole year to have that hired out.
Okay.
So it's under the $10,000 earmark that we were referring to. So that's what we want to continue to do next year. Because having two employees to keep up with what we got, it's hard enough with one. This, having Hillside Cemetery mowed and trimmed, that seems more cost-effective to do it that way. So it's just a transfer.
Okay, so it's transferring from personnel to operating.
Correct.
And to pay for an outside vendor. And in doing so, you are doing a fiscally responsible thing by not having to hire another employee who would then come onto the town's benefits and...
Right, and a yearly cost would be much more, which we still would prefer to have it that way, but with just with what we have for monies.
And how many cemeteries does the town have responsibility for?
I believe it's 11.
11.
It varies in size. Our main one, right, Hillside and Hillcrest take majority of the time. Hillcrest being on Wolverham Road. That is where all 95% of the burials do happen now. That's where, like, the other ones do not... There is some at Hillside that still go there, but they're pretty much...
So Hillcrest is the most active cemetery?
By far, yes, it is, yes.
And I think this might be a good opportunity for you to let the public know that we also have the opportunity for residents to volunteer their time. And we have been doing that this last year with one of our residents.
We do. It's Mr. Mark Russell. He came to us, and he just said, "I want to volunteer in some way. I can't. I'm retired. I can't take money. I just want to help out." And I said, "Well, let's try the cemetery." I know Matt could use it. And Mark has been a huge asset. He comes and goes as he wants, you know, being in retirement. You can't schedule your day's work around it, but...
But I think that's a great way for the residents to have a chance to help out and to understand that.
Correct.
We don't have all the staff to man everything that we need to. So if someone is looking to do a little light labor and wants to be outside, please contact Ben.
And with burials, we do highway. We do actually help out with the digging, with whatever Matt needs. And I am going to... Special thanks to Matt Warzik. He's been doing a phenomenal job, being by himself and overseeing and getting what needs to be done up there to the best of his ability, being a body of one, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Let's move on to Article Nine. And Article Nine, the brief description, is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the Highway Vehicle Maintenance Line. And through conversations with you earlier this year, which, to remind everyone, we're only in October.
Yep.
The fiscal year started in July.
Yep.
So we are four months in that you have spent 45% of your line to repair vehicles.
Correct. We had one, one of our trucks, the front ends. It's a four-wheel drive went out. That was $9,800. It's actually a DEP. DEP, which is, for people that don't know, it's a diesel. It's added with the diesel now. It's federally mandated across the world, basically. It started in Europe. This is what is really becoming a problem child because it actually keeps harder. It's more computers. It goes, and it burns with the diesel. When things go wrong, it's very expensive to fix. We did have one truck where the front-wheel drive went. That was, between that and the DEP with that situation, that was $9,800.
And you're asking for $10,000.
$10,000, actually, to kind of replace it, replace that cost that we did so we're not going into the winter. Because we're going to have more breakdowns. We know that. It's just, I don't want to run short halfway into the winter. We can do a snow and ice, where we fix stuff under snow and ice. Certainly, if it's during the snow and ice season, but we're finding that a lot of this stuff is happening out of the snow and ice.
And to educate all of us, including me, when you don't have enough funds to fix a vehicle, is that vehicle unable to be on the road for maintenance of the town roads?
Correct.
So then we would lose out on maintenance being done on the roads?
Correct. Yes, absolutely.
That's a good explanation, and we look forward to talking about that more at Town Meeting. And then I did say in my intro that we were not going to talk about planning articles, but Ben has Article 32, which is under the Planning Board, but it actually connects to the Highway Department, and it has to do with stormwater management plans.
Yep.
And I'm reading here, it's an amendment to a zoning bylaw that we currently already have, but there's an amendment that the town is required to do by compliance under the Environmental Protection Act, I believe?
Yes, so when we say this, this was established, it started in 2003. EPA, which is a federally mandated. It's, this started in the federal government. And what it did is them and DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, which is state, they basically started then. In 2006, Town of Munson adopted a bylaw, which was for the stormwater management plan, but it was never accepted. So what we have to do at this meeting is get it accepted. For the very reason that DEP has been, like, overseeing it, I'll say, through these years, and every year, we have to do a report.
And we have to get a permit, right?
We have to get a permit every year to pass for the MS-4 to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So the EPA now is cracking down. They're like, "You guys need this. You need it on the books by January 1st." So quite simply, it is something that we've got it... I'm not going to go through the whole thing. We haven't got that much time.
Right.
But it basically... And I hear people say, "Oh, this is local conservation." No, they really, they do have a say once where... Let's just say you're going to build a house off a Main Street. They just want to control what comes into stormwater management is that, like, where's the water coming from your lot? Is it going to end up in the town stormwater management, which is your basins you see outside is your country drainage? Excuse me. They just want to, like, make it so that all the discharge doesn't come into that. It's not going to really change anything that we're seeing right now. It's not... Even though MS-4 does provide with the whole, covers the whole town, basically, what we're looking for is our water shed district that we do not want to pollute.
Which is mostly down street.
Correct.
Because if you live outside of the area, you have a well.
Yes, and with your water runoff, it's not going to... It'll filter itself, well, not completely, but before it gets... Well, downtown where the shit can be broken is, everything ends up in there. That's what MS-4 Storm Waste Management is about, to control that. But like I said, it's not the town conservation that's come up with... They oversee it in a way, but it's DEP and EPA that is...
Right, so it's requirements from the federal and the state level that all communities are required to follow.
In the country, yes.
In the country. This is a bylaw under the zoning.
Yep.
This actual article has no financial ramifications. Your budget already has funds in it that you use every year for the permit application and to write the plan.
The problem is, if we do not get this bylaw through, then the EPA starts fining us.
Okay.
And they haven't given a number, but it's going to be in the thousands. So we just simply need this bylaw to pass to be on the books.
So this is to be in compliance.
Correct.
Wonderful.
Correct.
And you'll hear more about this at Special Town Meeting on October 27th, 2025. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Chief Harris is with me tonight, and we are going to be talking about a couple articles that are falling under the Fire Department. One of them is Article 10, and I'll read a little description so we can understand what we're going to be talking about. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the fire vehicle maintenance line." So Brian, earlier on, we spoke with your counterpart, Ben, from the Highway Department, and this seems to be a similar trend in your department. Your vehicle maintenance line has already spent 50% since July. Can you talk to us a little bit about that and what the need is that you're asking at Town Meeting?
Sure. So the one expenditure, we had a major brake failure in one of our engines. Our budget is $14,500. That repair was $8,200 just for that one. Looking through my budget, we've actually spent more than 75% of that budget. We have less than $5,000 left in that account because we have other maintenance items that come out of it, like pump testing, oil changes, vehicle inspections. So with expenses getting more and more each year, that amount is not going to cover the rest of the year.
And as we spoke about with Ben, if you are not repairing your apparatuses or your ambulances, what is the negative effect on our community?
They'll be taken out of service and not available for use.
And so we would then have to rely on mutual aid.
Correct.
Which is not an ideal situation for any community resident who is looking for 911 services, whether it be fire, ambulance services, and/or police. So this is definitely an important topic. And Brian, you said your full budget for maintenance was about $14,000?
$14,500. It's actually less than it was 20 years ago.
So, and now, we would assume that things are costing more to repair, but your budget is less now?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for explaining that. And again, that's Article 10. And then the next article that the chief is involved in is a CPC article, and it is for the Bellman Museum. And if you remember, last May, at Annual Town Meeting...
October.
Oh, October. Thank you for correcting me. A year ago, at the Special Town Meeting, the town was able to take over the stewardship and retain the Bellman Museum in town, which is the Munson-Bellman Museum, which has a room full of fire, historical vehicles, memorabilia, clothing, pictures, all types of things that are owed to our former firefighters who helped protect the town. And so Brian is the steward of that association now, and he's bringing forward an article to Community Preservation. So why don't you tell us about that article?
Sure. So just a little history on the Bellman. The Bellman was formed in 1971, and their main goal was to preserve the history of the Munson Fire Department, which they've done a tremendous job of doing for the last 53 years. As you said, last October, the town voted to take ownership of it. Our goal with this article is to raise and appropriate enough money to replace the heating system in it. The building was moved to its current location from the bank parking lot in 1989, at which time they put a heating system, a used heating system, in from the '80s. That heating system has long ago reached its end of life, and we're trying to upgrade to a new heating and air-conditioned system to better maintain the climate in the building to protect the items inside of it.
And this article has been voted in the affirmative by the Community Preservation Committee.
Correct.
And just for our audience members, Community Preservation Committee meets twice a year. They meet before Spring Town Meeting and before the annual, or the special that we have in the fall. And members of town departments or the public can bring certain projects forward for consideration. And I think this is a great project being brought forward by Chief Harris, and I commend him for doing so. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Hi, thank you for joining us. I have Craig Jalbert with me. He is our Water and Sewer Superintendent. And for the Special Town Meeting, we have seven articles that have been placed on the warrant by the Water and Sewer Superintendent. They're going to be Articles 16 through Article 22 for your reference when you look at the warrant. And Article 16, the brief description, is to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate from Water and Sewer Enterprise retained earnings to the Water and Sewer Operating Budgets a sum of money for the replacement of doors, frames, and hardware at the Water and Sewer Department at 198 Main Street. Could you tell us a little bit about that article, Craig?
Yeah, so the present doors that are entry doors for the Water and Sewer Department building have been there since the building was constructed.
When was that?
I believe it was 1993.
Okay.
The problem is that the doors now are getting to the point where we can't replace the locks anymore, and they wear out over time, obviously. We've replaced them probably several times, even during my time there. So what this article is going to do is replace both entry doors and also put in panic bars to make them more compliant.
Great.
From the interior. And again, it should get us back up and running.
Wonderful.
Leaving entry.
We would like that. And I would like to also provide some information on the Water and Sewer Department in general. Taxpayers are not paying into the Water and Sewer Department. The rate payers are. You may be one of the same. You're paying taxes, and you may be paying your water and your sewer rates. But if you have a well and a septic system, you are not paying into that budget. So all the articles that Water and Sewer bring forward are not coming from taxation. They are coming from what's called the retained earnings account, and that is the account that all of the fees that are paid for your water and sewer usage go into. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that there is a different financial picture when we are looking at the articles from Water and Sewer.
That's totally correct.
Thank you.
All these articles are transferred from our budget. We're completely self-funded.
Yes.
There's no tax dollars that go into our budget, and all these articles are coming out of our own retained earnings. Free cash, so to speak.
Thank you so much. And Article 17 is going to be about replacing radio communication cables at Bethany and Palmer Road stations and the Eli Road tank. So we have three locations that we have pump stations at.
Correct.
And these are to replace the cables there. And what I'm reading here is that it's going to replace cables from 2008. So again, it's been quite a while since the cables were done, and that this is an existing insulation jacket on the communication cables. They are cracked due to the sun and UV exposure. So similar to when we're out in the sun on our own, we get sun damage, and so do these cables.
Yes, you're right.
All right. Article 18 is about the Bethany Road well pump, and that is to replace it. And so that is pretty standard, $25,000 to replace the well pump because we need the pump to pump the water.
Yes, over time, pumps just lose their efficiency. And this pump has, it's approximately 10 years old now. And what happens over time is the pumps can't pump against pressure like they did when they were new. They wear out. The tolerances increase. And so what we're seeing now is the output dropping off for the amount of, you know, electricity that we're using. So we may be able to sneak by for a little while, as is, but I want to, this article will basically be in a capital situation where, when the time comes to replace it, and it's going to come, we'll have the money in place to replace it. If not, it'll get rolled over.
Wonderful. Thank you. Article 19 is to... For the sewer capital budget. So this is how, we were just talking about water and sewer. They have two separate retained earning lines. So this is a specific one that's going to be coming right from the sewer enterprise, and it is for the inflow and infiltration called INI. And it's a repair project. And this is year one of Task Two for engineering services that need to be done for this project. And it is to the Continuous Flow Monitoring Program and report summary findings for the entire collection system. Is this a report that we are required to send into the state?
Every year, we're going to have to send a report into the state and EPA. This is something that we've never had to do in the past. We always operated under Palmer's Nipton's permit.
Why don't you talk a little bit about, why are we talking about Palmer when we're talking about our sewer system?
Oh, because all of our waste, all the wastewater in Munson gets pumped into Palmer. We share the use of the wastewater treatment plant in Palmer. And this has been going on since our sewer system was installed in 1979.
So in '79, the Town of Munson did not build their own sewer treatment facility?
No. It was grants and monies from EPA and USDA made it very...
Advantageous?
Advantageous to the both towns that we combine and build one treatment plant and use them both. Both of us use the same treatment plant.
And so Palmer's the host of it.
Correct.
And this is a repair, or this is a report that we're required to submit?
Correct. And this report will get submitted to EPA and DEP. Again, we, in the past, we operated under Palmer's umbrella permit in MPDES. That stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. And that's the permit that the wastewater treatment plant in Palmer has operated under. And it gets renewed every seven to 10 years over the time. And this time, when they renewed the permit, they set all the co-permittees, which we used to be. Now, we have our own permit now. So as, because we have our own permit, by mandate of EPA and DEP, we have to invest in inflow and infiltration removal every year. So we have a consultant. Our consultant recommended that as part of our, you know, initial projects, you know, our contribution, we make a study of the sewer collection system and do flow monitoring. And this is what this article is for. It's for Task Number Two. Task Number One was to basically, the engineering work behind it, they're going to divide the sewer collection system up into 10 sub-basins, and then they're going to install flow metering for a limited amount of time in the spring, hopefully, at the spring of next year, and monitor the flow during high-rain events. And we'll see what sections of the town's collection system are contributing the most inflow or infiltration. And once we know that, moving forward, now we will invest our monies into eliminating that inflow and infiltration in those sections. So we're not just guessing where we have to go, and we're not trying to do the entire town all at once, which would be extremely cost prohibitive. So this is kind of like a small way of doing it. Do the study, find out where the highest areas are, and start with those, and then work down the list as we move forward into the future.
And this will create hard data for you to work off of.
Oh, most certainly. And the net result is to remove the inflow and infiltration because we pay Palmer for the use of the system, the treatment plant, based on the flow coming out of Munson into Palmer. So anything that we can do to reduce the flow is a big savings. Hopefully, savings. But right now, the way inflation is and everything like that, it's just, it's crazy. It's hard to keep up, as everybody else knows too, so.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Article 20 is to purchase a spare wastewater pump at the Hospital Road Sewer Station. So again, I'm understanding that this is replacing or actually buying a pump so that when a pump goes down, you have one on the shelf to use. So similar to making sure you're ready to go at your home. If you need to replace something, you have it on the shelf to go because this is not just for one house that you're trying to provide the services for. It's for how many services in town?
Oh, Jesus, far as you had to ask me that. Um, we service roughly uh, four thousand people.
Four thousand people, yeah.
Again, this is, this is for spare um, to have on the shelf in the event that um, one of our pumps goes down. We have to take it out for service. We have another pump to put in its place. We, there are two at the pump station that we operate, operate normally on an everyday basis. And they operate.
Alternate back and forth.
They alternate back and forth all day long. And roughly depending on the time of the year, uh, between each pump usually sees between like during us, you know, high rain events, stuff like that, we'll see like maybe three and a half hours a day. During a summer drought, you know, when we're not getting too much rain, roughly two and a half hours a day each pump. So what happens is now when we take one out for service, that pump is operating all by itself in the pump station. And that's kind of scary when you think about, okay, if we have a problem with that one, now what do we do?
Right.
Now you're hiring, it's not like, you know, even if we had permission to buy this pump today, it would take weeks, maybe months to get, it's gonna take that long to get that pump. So again, we have to hire an outside contractor to come in, bypass pump the pump station. So I think for the cost of this, it's really kind of like really cheap insurance to have it on the shelf and then, you know, have it available for us to use.
Smart fiscal management.
Well, thank you.
Yes. Article twenty-one is the joint treatment prior year bill account. And so you have a bill from FY twenty-five that needs to be put, paid. And just so the audience understands, once we're past June thirtieth of the previous fiscal year, if anything rolls past our encumbrance date of July fifth, or July or August fifteenth, I believe it is. If a bill comes in later, then we have to have it at a special town meeting.
Correct. Um, this, this um, this fourth quarter bill, it's, it's usually, it's the true-up bill, we call it, because they, they, we make quarterly payments to Palmer based on an estimate, what our, what the ending, ending cost is gonna be. However, and then we budgeted like this, um, in this fiscal year, uh, this bill is for FY
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So in FY twenty-five, we budgeted four hundred thousand. So if the final bill comes in and it's over four hundred thousand, then we have to wait until the special town meeting, which we do. And again, this is, this is a common occurrence for us. Every, every year this happens for us. And this is, this, you know, par for the course, nothing out of the ordinary. Um, this year, um, the bill was, you know, thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars more than what we anticipated because of unanticipated costs on maintenance at the wastewater treatment plant or one of the two pump stations that we share use of, pump station one, pump station two in Palmer. As it turns out, they did a lot of work at pump station two and they're continuing to do work there. And again, that raises the bill a little bit more than what we expected. Again, nothing out of the ordinary. It's just housekeeping. And again, these articles come out of our free retained earnings, so.
Great. Thank you, Craig.
You're welcome.
And number Article twenty-two, which is your final one, is to see if the town will transfer and appropriate from the sewer enterprise fund for the joint sewer care of the Palmer Water Pollution Control Facility's capital improvement projects. And that is for a portion of the electric service upgrade project.
Yes. So this is a project that it's been ongoing at, at the wastewater treatment plant for um, several years now. Um, and they're just coming to the end of it now. And our, and our responsibility as far as that part of our project is estimated to be um, roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. Hopefully, um, everything comes in under budget. They say right now it's under budget, so it should be in good, good shape.
Thank you, Craig. We appreciate you coming in today.
Well, you're welcome. And it was a pleasure to be on your show.
All right. Today I'm gonna review the articles that we have for special town meeting. And I'm gonna start with Article one, which is to deposit a hundred thousand dollars from free cash to our stabilization account. And that account is to build up the town reserves. A stabilization account is a reserve fund that can be used for catastrophic or emergency events. Article two is to trans, is to deposit twenty-five thousand from free cash to the capital stabilization account. Similar to what I just spoke about with the regular stabilization, the capital account is to build up reserves so that we can use them for larger capital items in the future. Article three is ten thousand from free cash to the Memorial Hall stabilization account. And that is to help the restoration of Memorial Hall that has been being worked on over the last few years. And their committee has been doing a wonderful job of being stewards of that building, applying for grants and receiving grants from the National Historic reservation, preservation funds. And they actually are in the process right now of doing a plaster repair and painting of the building. So it's definitely being put to good use. Article five is monies being transferred in the amount of seventeen thousand. And that is to pay for an acting council on aging director at this time, as we have a personnel leave that's going on. Article six is to transfer funds for the Council on Aging Director, who has announced that she is retiring the end of November, Lori Stacy. We are going to miss her and we're gonna thank her for all of the years of service that she's provided to the seniors in Munson and to all of her coworkers. She has definitely been a bright light when she comes in to visit all of us and we are gonna wish her the best retirement. But through our personnel policy, she does have a buyout of her um, sick time. And so this article will fund that obligation. Article seven, we recently thanked Chief Kozlowski and sent him off on a plane to Florida for his retirement. And in his employment contract, he also has a obligation that the town is paying out for um, vacation and sick time to him. Article eight is for funds for our new audit firm that the town has hired for a three-year contract, starting with the FY twenty-five audit. And so that is twelve thousand dollars from free cash to pay for that. Article eleven is prior year bills that we have. We have uh, two prior year bills for the large amount of eleven hundred dollars. So I'm hoping we can get a affirmative nine-tenths vote on that to pay the vendors for EMS supplies and for an alarm system repair that we needed to do. Article twelve, we spoke about with Hope Bodwell, so you already know about that. Article thirteen is a transfer of ten thousand dollars for the electricity account at the Council on Aging. And this is a standard transfer that we have at special town meeting in regards to electricity accounts as we have several accounts that are under town departments that fall under our net meeting or metering agreements. And these are basically general ledger entries that have to be done on the backside at the end of the years. Article fourteen is to put monies into a human resources consultant line so that the town can hire a consultant to conduct a police lieutenant search and assessment for the position of police lieutenant. As I spoke about earlier, Chief Kozlowski retired. And the select board is currently in contract negotiations with Acting Chief Nick Gasparini. Nick is currently leaving that lieutenant position. So now the recruitment process will include a search and assessment center. Article fifteen is an article also connected to the chief of police position. And with the retirement of Chief, Chief Kozlowski, it was recommended by town council that town meeting accept clause one, section eight of an article in the general court, which will provide authority for hiring to the chief of police instead of the select board. And this is an article that will be spoken about by our town attorney at town meeting. Article sixteen through twenty-two, we spoke about. Those were all of the water sewer. Article twenty-three is a citizen's petition. Articles twenty-four through twenty-nine are the council, uh, Community Preservation. And then thirty to thirty-two are our planning board articles. And I just wanted to um, follow up and close out with saying that this art, this warrant was created through the work of the finance committee and the finance um, department, myself, Mary Watson, our town clerk, Kate Federoff, our town attorney, the select board, of course. And the select board voted and approved this special town meeting warrant at their September twenty-third meeting. So every article that we just spoke about has been approved and moved forward for town meeting to discuss on Monday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five at seven PM. Please plan to arrive a little earlier because you do have to get checked in through the clerk's office. They have their registrars helping out. And you'll receive your paddle, which will have green one side, red the other side. And we look forward to a democratic process of having our special town meeting on October twenty-seventh. And I hope to see all of you there. Thank you.